The council will come to order. Madam Clerk, please take a quorum. Roll call.
Good afternoon, everyone. If you can please mark yourself present on the e-voting devices. Okay, I will now call on those who have not marked themselves. Alderwoman Dowell, not present. Alderperson Robinson, not present. Alderman Yancey, not present. Alderman Mitchell, not present. Alderman Beal, not present. Alderwoman Gutierrez, not present. Alderwoman Coleman, not present. Alderman David Moore, not present in chambers. Alderman Curtis, not present. Alderwoman Jeanette Taylor, not present. Alderman Mosley, not present. Alderman Rodriguez, not present. Alderwoman Scott, not present in the chambers. Alderperson Sigcho Lopez. Alderman Sigcho Lopez is present. Alderwoman Rodriguez Sanchez, not present. Alderperson Ramirez Rosa, not present in chambers. Alderwoman Mitz, not present. Alderman Vasquez, not present. Alderman Napolitano, not present. Alderwoman Clay, not present. Alderman Martin, present. Alderman Martin is present. Alderperson Monae Happenworth, not present. Everyone in the chambers has been recorded. Oh, sorry. Alderman Rodriguez of... Oh, sorry. Alderman Gutierrez of 14 is here. Okay. Quorum is now closed.
Thank you. We have a quorum. Alderman Rodriguez Sanchez, Scott, Yancey, Mosley, Taylor, Coleman, Moore have requested to participate in today's meeting remotely under Rule 59. Alder Rodriguez Sanchez is away on business. The public body, Scott, Mosley, family emergencies, Moore, medical issue, Yancey, Coleman, and Taylor are ill. Alderman Lopez, do you care to make a motion?
Good morning, Mr. President. With the exception of Alderwoman Coleman, who is next to me, I move then. Alder... She has a miraculous recovery. That she is allowed... That all members listed are allowed to participate remotely.
Thank you very much. With the exception of Alderwoman Coleman, who is actually here, all those in favor of the motion of allowing then the six stated alders to participate in today's meeting remotely signify by saying aye. Any opposed, say nay. In the opinion of the Chair, the ayes have it. Madam Clerk, please mark Alders Rodriguez Sanchez, Scott, Yancey, Mosley, Taylor, and Moore as present on the quorum call. Please, the Chair recognizes Alder Vasquez.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just want to be marked here for the quorum.
Please indicate and mark Alder Vasquez here for the quorum. Please. The Chair recognizes Alderman Robinson.
Mr. President, if you could please make sure that I am here, marked present. Thank you.
Please record Alderman Lamont Robinson as present as a part of the roll call. Did we miss anyone else? Very good. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Please remain standing for the invocation which will be delivered by Pastor James Shooter of Quentin Road Baptist Church.
Our dear Heavenly Father, we are so thankful today for leaders, those that you have ordained and appointed, Lord, to govern. Lord, we pray that all decisions made would be for righteousness and good. And, Lord, that we would reject evil. Father, I also think right now of many people that are suffering and hurting and in pain and emotionally and physically and spiritually. So, Father, may the words of your servant David give us some courage, some strength, some peace in our hearts and for those that are suffering. And, Father, we know that King David, a man after your own heart, a man who had all sorts of problems and trials in his own life, even his own son going against him, prayed these words. "Lord, how are they increased that trouble me? Many are they that rise up against me; many there be which say of my soul, 'There is no help for him in God;' but thou, O Lord, art a shield for me, my glory and the lifter up of mine head. I cried unto the Lord with my voice, and he heard me out of his holy hill; I laid me down and slept; I awaked, for the Lord sustained me. I will not be afraid of ten thousands of people; they have set themselves against me round about. Arise, O Lord, save me, O my God; for thou hast smitten all thine enemies upon thy cheekbone; thou hast broken the teeth of the ungodly. Salvation belieth unto the Lord; thy blessing is upon thy people." Father, we're thinking of those in conflict, in harm's way. We're thinking of many friends that I have in Israel, many people, Father, that are grieving and burying sons and daughters and grandparents. Father, we're sorry. We're aghast at what has transpired and what has happened. And, Father, as a pastor, I wonder, could the human soul get more depraved than it already is? But, Father, we know that you are good and that you are God. And, Lord, we come before you when we don't know what to do and where to turn and what to say. So, Father, I pray for all people in harm's way and conflict. I pray for those in the Palestinian areas, Father, that are innocent. Lord, protect the children, protect them, Father, from harm. We also, Lord, are grieving with our Jewish friends, not just in Israel but around the world, as it seems like another Holocaust has come against them. So, Father, I, as a pastor, and my church, and evangelicals, and Christians, and hopefully all Americans, will take a stand for Israel, our dearest friend in the world. So, Father, we love you, we thank you. We thank you for your grace and your goodness, even in the hardest of times. In the name of Jesus, I pray. Amen.
Madam Clerk, please record Alderman Matt O'Shea as present as a part of our quorum. Madam Clerk, please read the call of today's special meeting.
The following call for a special meeting of the City Council was filed in the Clerk's office on Wednesday, October 11, 2023, at 1:36 p.m. To the Honorable Members of the City Council, ladies and gentlemen, together with Aldermen Silverstein, Lopez, and Vegas, I hereby call a special meeting of the City Council to be convened on Friday, October 13, at 1:40 p.m. in the City Council chamber for the following purpose and no other purpose whatsoever: to consider a resolution condemning Hamas's attack on Israel. Very truly yours, Brandon Johnson, Mayor.
Thank you. This is time for public comment.
The council will now begin the public comment period, which is limited to a maximum of 30 minutes. Each speaker is limited to three minutes. Speakers cannot yield or transfer their time to another speaker. Any written comments that have been submitted will be posted and made available for Aldermedic review. Our first speaker today is Martin Levine.
Good afternoon. My name is Martin Levine. I speak to you this afternoon as a resident of the 48th Ward, as the former Chief Executive Officer of JCC Chicago, and as a member of Jewish Voice for Peace. I speak to ask you to reject any resolution about Israel-Palestine that ignores the grim reality being lived by millions of Palestinians. There can be no excuse for the horrors of last weekend. Killing children has no justification. Killing civilians has no justification. Taking men, women, and children as hostages has no justification. Celebrating the death and destruction of others has no justification. The fighters who did this cannot be justified or excused. Jewish Voice for Peace mourns deeply for the over 1,300 Israelis killed and the families destroyed, including many of our own. And we fear for the lives of Israelis taken hostage. But we cannot look away, as you meet today, that the Israeli government has blocked all humanitarian aid and has shut off electricity and water to Gaza. Gaza, which is a sliver of land about half the size of our city. It's a home to more than 2 million people, half of whom are 15 years of age or younger. And this morning, I learned that half of those have been told to leave their homes and flee south with no place to go. Hospitals in Gaza cannot save lives. The Internet will collapse, cutting off communication with the outside world. And drinking water will run out. Gaza will be plunged into darkness, turning neighborhoods to rubble. Still worse, Israel has openly stated its intention to commit mass atrocities and even genocide, with Prime Minister Netanyahu saying, and I quote, "That Israel's response will reverberate for generations." And Defense Minister Yoav Galant said that Israel is fighting human animals and should act accordingly. As Jews, we know what happens when people are called animals. You cannot ignore the millions of Palestinians who live in territories as non-citizens under Israeli control, whose lives have been brutalized for decades, living in what Israeli and international human rights organizations have concluded are conditions of apartheid. Hamas has committed an atrocity, but does that now justify the committing of new atrocities against the Palestinian people? A policy of unconditional support for Israel does not keep the Jewish people safe. If we have learned anything from the last 75 years, it should be that lesson. The City of Chicago does not have to participate in a deadly cycle of violence. We can act with moral clarity.
Mr. Levine, we want to thank you very much for your comments. However, your time has expired. Our next speaker is Dan Goldwin.
I am Dan Goldwin of the Jewish United Fund, Jewish Federation of Chicago. Two days ago, I spoke to the City Council about how Hamas terrorists invaded Israel's sovereign territory and unleashed a frenzy of murder, rape, torture, and kidnapping, the likes of which the Jews last experienced during the Holocaust. Over 1,300 Israelis were murdered, over 3,000 were injured, and between 150 and 200 were kidnapped and taken back to Gaza in less than 24 hours. Hamas's spasm of murder, rape, and torture was not politically motivated. It was not in the pursuit of lofty goals such as freedom, equality, and independence. Every Jew that Hamas terrorists murdered, raped, tortured, and kidnapped was within Israel's sovereign borders established by the United Nations in 1948. This can only mean that Hamas's goal was, is, and always will be the annihilation of Israel and the Jewish people. The images, stories, and testimonials from victims, and even from the Hamas terrorists themselves leave no doubt of Hamas's brutality. No one in the City Council chamber, including those opposing this resolution, is questioning what happened in Israel or the depraved inhumanity that Hamas continues to exhibit towards its own people or those they hold captive, rape, and torture in secret rooms and subterranean dungeons in Gaza. Yet, here we are once again, watching this City Council's moral standing hanging in the balance. Will you support and excuse rapists and murderers? Or will you stand up for the victims who no longer have a voice? This resolution is not about supporting or opposing Israel's government. It is about condemning the most sustained orchestrated and brutal attack unleashed against Jews since the Holocaust. This resolution makes three straightforward asks of you. Condemn the wanton massacre and abuse of innocent Israeli citizens. Demand that Hamas free the men, women, children, elderly, and infirm they abducted, and recognize Israel's right to defend its citizens and guests like any other nation would. This City Council, which is working night and day to stem gun violence, to find homes for Chicago's experiencing homeless, and to feed, clothe, and house the innocent migrants, should not be having such a hard time finding the voice to condemn Hamas terrorists' rape, murder, abuse, and abductions of thousands of innocent Israelis. There is an old Israeli saying, quote, "Walk with a friend in the dark is better than walking alone in the light." Israel and Chicago's Jewish community is now in the dark. Our hand is outstretched, looking for someone to take it and walk with us through the darkness and despair. Will you take our hand? Are you prepared or are you prepared to go home tonight to look your loved ones in the eyes and tell them that you chose murderers over murdered and rapists over their victims?
Thank you very much for your comments. Our next speaker is Rabbi Levi Mispowsky.
Thank you. I'm the Executive Director of the Chicago Republican Council, based in the 50th Ward. Ladies and gentlemen, in the course of your important work on behalf of the citizens of this great city, you deliberate and decide on all sorts of civic matters. Today, this special session has been called to consider a matter that is of utmost importance to the soul of this city and to the society of the just and decent individuals that reside here. You have been given the privilege and the responsibility of leadership. Your constituents have chosen you and look to you for your leadership. Just a few days ago, the morning serenity of a Jewish holiday was horrifically shattered by an unparalleled act of terror committed against innocent Israeli citizens, against Jews. With unconscionable savagery, brutality, and cruelty, countless terrorists slaughtered, raped, and mutilated innocent civilians of all nationalities and races, including many of our fellow American citizens, dismembering dozens and dozens of babies in front of their parents, murdering parents in front of their children, broadcasting the murder of grandmothers, raping women and parading them bloodied through the streets as trophies. Up to 200 were taken hostage, some bound and immediately executed, others tortured and taken to captivity. Throngs in Gaza were filmed, filmed themselves, rejoicing at the arrival of Israeli hostages. Hundreds of Palestinians surrounded pickup trucks laden with Israelis, dead and alive, cheering and parting. This ghoulish celebration played out in other cities in the Middle East, and to our horror, even in these United States and even in this great city. You will hear the howling, vitriol, and hatred of those who have boharingly claimed that these babies were not civilians, that the dismembered and organized rape somehow advanced the cause of freedom. You'll hear the butchers referred to as militants, gunmen, or freedom fighters. Radical actors across the political spectrum are justifying and even celebrating Hamas's barbaric acts against the Israeli outline. And on our streets, with sadistic joy and apocalyptic fervor, there is a battle raging, a paddle between good and bad, between deep, deep darkness and light, between hatred, racism, and inhumanity, and between people of good conscience everywhere. We are scared. We are not okay. The murderers cried Jews when they slaughtered. And Hamas called for today to be a general day of mobilization to threaten us here in Chicago and Jews everywhere. We hear loud, raucous voices cynically advancing a fallacious moral equivalence, but there is none. Educate yourselves. Hamas is focused on the bloodshed of innocents, and Israel does not target civilians. Listen to the words of President Biden. "We are witnessing abject evil. Our city looks to you for leadership and condemnation. There's no room for nuance, political moralizing, attempts at justification or moral equivalence. Please support this resolution and then go back to your constituencies and lead. We need each and every one of you, every civic leader, every religious leader, to speak with a clear moral voice. We cannot afford silence to even unwittingly be complicit in supporting any culture of such abhorrent evil."
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is David Goldenberg.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor and members of the City Council, my name is David Goldenberg, and I am the Midwest Regional Director of the ADL, the Anti-Defamation League. Founded here in Chicago in 1913, ADL's mission is to stop the defamation of the Jewish people and to secure justice and fair treatment to all. Today's vote condemning Hamas is a gut-check vote. It's about where this great city stands when it comes to terrorism. Hamas is a U.S. and internationally designated terrorist organization. Its assault on Israel this past weekend was a barbaric massacre and a slaughter of innocent families, children, elderly, and individuals, including nearly 300 attending a music festival, much like those hundreds of festivals that we host in each ward here across the city. Two dozen Americans are among the 1,300-plus murdered by Hamas in the last week, and more than two dozen Americans are still accounted for. Around 150 children, women, and men, ranging from babies as young as nine months to elderly Holocaust survivors, were kidnapped and taken as hostages into Gaza by Hamas and others. They include Israelis, Americans, and many other nationalities with strong communities here in Chicago. And as news reports are showing, hostages have been paraded around, mocked, and their suffering celebrated, posted on social media, and Hamas is now threatening to begin executions. Simply put, Hamas's terrorist attacks cannot go unchecked, and the City Council must speak out forcefully and collectively. As a community, we mourn for the innocent Palestinians who have been and will continue to suffer in this war. We know there are many Palestinians and Muslims in our community who are deep in pain right now as well. We've seen the problematic language by some dehumanizing Palestinians and Islamophobic rhetoric. And ADL has and will continue to fundamentally reject this. But when it comes to Hamas, there are no nuances. There is no gray area. It's not about statehood or peoplehood. For Hamas, it's about terrorism, and it's about killing Jews. And the chants we have heard on the streets across the country, including right on Michigan Avenue in the last 48 hours, calling for quote-unquote "Zionists" to be run out of the city? No, they are not talking about Israel. They are talking about Jews, full stop. And for those who have come to suggest to this council that their Jewish consciousness tells us, the council members, to reject this vote, understand Hamas will come for all of us because we are all Jewish. The massacre carried out by Hamas against unarmed and innocent children, families, and others was medieval, and the appropriate points of comparison are Al Qaeda and ISIS. Today, the City Council must lead and say that is not okay. The Council must unequivocally condemn Hamas's actions and reject any suggestion comparing an act of terrorism and a sovereign country's right to defend the safety and security of its own citizens. I urge all of you to vote yes, and thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you very much. Please call the next... Thank you very much. Please call the next speaker.
Our next speaker is Gabriel Miller.
Gabriel pressed R6 to unmute.
Hello, and thank you for having us to provide our comment. I would like to add my voice to the chorus here today in opposition to this ridiculous resolution. At a time when the rest of the world is condemning Israel for committing war crime after war crime, Chicago is fiddling around on whether to condemn Hamas. By doing so, Chicago will be doing its part in enabling the genocide of Palestinians, and this resolution acts like it's on the side of innocent civilians. So, in that case, I'd like to add, are you considering a resolution condemning Israel for using white phosphorus against the civilian population? Are you considering condemning Israel for its planned war crime of forced removal of 1 million Palestinians from northern Gaza? Are you going to condemn them for cutting off food, water, and electricity to Gaza? Another war crime called collective punishment. Did it ever cross your mind to condemn Israel when they assassinated Palestinian journalist Shereen Abu Akhla in broad daylight? Or when they brutalized the people carrying her coffin peacefully? Or when Israeli snipers killed innocent peaceful protesters throughout the March of Return? Did the people in office before you ever consider condemning Israel at any point? Since its inception, wouldn't crammed a country full of people into a 60-mile corner of their own country, creating the largest concentration camp in history, the largest open-air prison in the world? The answer is a resounding no. You never considered it, nor did your ancestors. But unfortunately for you, times have changed. The world is increasingly aware of the crimes of Israel and increasingly aware of the framework of politicians who enable their continued apartheid by resolutions such as these. And in a city like Chicago, with majority black and brown people who have experienced the apartheid-like conditions of oppression in the United States, a generation of young people have emerged to understand immediately that we have everything in common with the Palestinian people and nothing in common with the brutal Zionists under whom they suffer. A generation of people who are not surprised when we find out that our politicians, up to our president, spread lies about 40 babies being beheaded in order to rationalize genocide. We're only surprised that they're forced to walk those lies back, but of course, the damage is done. People are still spewing the debunked lies about rape and massacre babies, even here in this very meeting, when actually, there is endless evidence of Israel having killed over 500 babies in the last 48 hours alone, having dropped more bombs in 24 hours than the U.S. dropped on Afghanistan in one year. And finally, let it be known that condemning the attack as the actions of some fringe group misses the point of what's going on. The attacks were carried out by a broad coalition of groups from every section of Palestinian society, not just Hamas. That coalition represents a people determined to attain freedom at any cost, and they have arrived at this point in the face of a broad coalition of right-wing Zionists and their supporters, like those in the City Council, who would start a meeting with a prayer calling for their attempt at freedom, a second Holocaust where our so silent you could hear a rat piss on cotton when innocent peaceful Palestinians are annihilated day in and day out like the Native Americans of this country. If it were another time, these same people would be condemning Africans for rebelling against their slave masters during slavery, such as Nat Turner or the Haitian Revolution. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. Please, thank you. Please. Sir, I would ask you, sir, please have a seat. Please, sir, have a seat. Thank you. Please, sir, have a seat, so that we can continue our meeting. Please, let's make sure that we are in order. Please, do not engage. Do not engage. Please. If we cannot, if we cannot maintain order and decorum, I will have this chamber cleared. Just listen. If you cannot remain calm and in order, I will have this chamber cleared. I'm not going to clear it. I'm asking you all, stay with... We're good. Listen, look this way, please. Look this way, please. If you cannot maintain some level... this way, please. Look this way, please. If you cannot maintain some level of decorum, I will clear this chamber. That is not my intention. We have a few more speakers that have signed up to address this matter publicly. That's what we do in a democracy. Give people the ability and the opportunity to express themselves, and you have a right to disagree. But I expect--stay with me--but I expect that there be some decorum and some order. That is what I'm asking of this body. Mr. Clerk, would you please call the next public speaker?
The next speaker today is Noor Hassan.
Good afternoon, Mayor Johnson and Alderpeople of Chicago.
Good afternoon.
My name is Noor, and I am here today as a longtime Chicago activist to implore you all to stand on the right side of history. I have lived in Chicagoland all my life, and I have watched our city take a historic stand on the side of justice through the mobilization of black and brown activists. I have seen all the ways that my fellow Chicagoans stand up for what is right. And yet, as a Palestinian-American, I have also seen all the ways which we have let our communities down. It is on record that Arabs and Muslims in Chicagoland have been heavily and unjustly surveilled by the FBI as a part of the United States' failed and shameful so-called War on Terror. I grew up in the shadow of a world which used blatant propaganda and racist lies to manufacture consent for decades-long wars in the Middle East and which led to historic levels of hate crimes against those racialized as Muslim. And now I am witnessing an eerily familiar sensation in the wake of violence that has broken out in Israel and Palestine. I am frankly terrified of what I have seen in the news this past week, where we could be mourning the tragic loss of life and calling for diplomatic solutions for peace. I have only seen blatant propaganda and racist lies about Palestinians and Muslims in the media once again. Lies about rape, lies about decapitated babies, which even the Israeli media itself refused to confirm is true, which even President Biden couldn't confirm is true. When would we learn from our mistakes? All these disproven lies to manufacture consent for Israel's decimation of the people of Gaza, half of whom are children, who have been subject to the ethnic cleansing since 1948, before the existence of Hamas, and who have been subject to a military blockade by Israel since 2007, a people who are subject to random acts of illegal collective punishment, who this very second have no water, fuel, medicine, or electricity because Israel has decided to punish the actions of the few--who has decided to punish the millions for the actions of the few. There is white phosphorus currently raining down on Palestinians, a war crime, and you are talking about both sides? This is what Amnesty International and Human Rights Watch have unequivocally condemned as apartheid and that the United Nations has designated as illegal. This is what Malcolm X, Muhammad Ali, Angela Davis, and Nelson Mandela have dedicated their lives to speaking out against. These are the allies of the Palestinian struggle. These are the people who know the right side of history, and you sit here debating which side you want to be on? I am terrified. These are the sorts of events, the kinds of behavior, the kinds of rhetoric that led to the murder of over 1 million innocent Iraqi civilians and the surveillance of millions of innocent black and brown people in America. We are at a key moment in our history where we can make the same mistakes again, or we can choose honesty and justice, where we could be mourning the loss of innocent life, where we could be speaking out about the occupation Palestinians are barely surviving under. We are instead considering as a city to pass a horrific and one-sided resolution introduced by Alderman Silverstein, which completely erases the victimhood and humanity of Palestinians who have died as well. We are barely sympathized with as a people when we are alive. Now we cannot even be mourned in death. This is despicable. Alderpeople, I implore you to say no to this resolution and work with us to draft a better one. Thank you for your time, and please vote no.
Thank you. Thank you. Mr. Clerk, please call the next speaker. Listen, we're not doing that. Don't do that. Don't do that. Don't do that. Listen, listen to me for a quick second, y'all. You give your presentation and you speak, people clap, we move to the next one. You don't have to shout people down that you disagree with. We're almost through this. When someone speaks, you can clap, and then we move on to the next speaker. We can do this, you all. We are better than this. Regardless of how you feel about this position, I am asking this public to maintain some level of decorum. Let the person speak. If you agree with them, you can clap. When that clap ends, we'll go to the next speaker. It's not that complicated. Mr. Clerk, please call the next speaker.
Our next speaker is Sari Taha.
And by the way, I appreciate the snaps because it's a little more subdued. Thank you.
Good afternoon, everyone, except for people who support occupation and apartheid. I was born in occupied Palestine. I was raised in apartheid. I remember going through checkpoints where I would be stripped, searched, and humiliated by Israeli soldiers and settlers. I was only trying to go to school. I come today to talk to you about Israel's massacres of defenseless Palestinian civilians in Gaza, which is internationally recognized as an open-air prison. Israeli Prime Minister Benjamin Netanyahu himself blessed to help the supply of electricity, food, water, and fuel to Palestinian enclave with over 6,000 bombs falling in the past week, including on the last exit out of Gaza, effectively trapping more than 2 million people and leaving them to be massacred. By the way, those bombs are so powerful that they bring residential high rises to the ground. Gaza is a small enclave that has been under siege since 2007. Half of the population living there have been born in prison. Half of the population in Gaza are 14 and under. Apartheid Israel has used illegal weapons like white phosphorus, which is illegal under international law, and they are using it again. There are over--there are a total of over 1,500 Palestinians murdered, and at least 500 of them are children, according to the Palestinian Health Ministry. Now Gaza can be called nothing than a death camp. Just this morning, Israel warned that the UN that they have 24 hours to evacuate Palestinians, a population of 1.1 Palestinians out of northern Gaza, an impossible task. We stand firm on our message that supporting apartheid Israel at this time would be clearly supporting genocide. Many of our families relocated to Chicago generations back due to the prior expulsions and ethnic cleansing of Palestinians from their ancestral land. These practices are ongoing. The City of Chicago knows this story too well, being home to the indigenous population of the Twami and Bujwi people, just a couple of the tribes recognized by the City of Chicago days ago on Indigenous Peoples' Day. Our road infrastructure and housing policies have contributed to the displacement and struggles. This is a pattern that we cannot afford to repeat. Recently, Alderman Silverstein introduced a Chicago Hate Crime Ordinance to create a new category called Hate Incidents. Passing this resolution would directly contradict the effort of the initiative putting Palestinian students, professionals, and activists in harm's way by criminalizing advocacy for Palestinian women rights as protected by the First Amendment. Listen, you have the opportunity here to follow the footsteps of Angela Davis, Nansel Mandela, who fought apartheid in South Africa, and so many of your personal heroes. I implore you to have courage to imply your moral conscience and recognize we are a people's movement calling for Palestinians to be able to live in peace and dignity against billions of dollars of interest and--
Thank you very much for your comments.
Our next speaker is Ephraim Prero.
Your Honor and all honored council members.
Good afternoon.
Today I stand before you on behalf of my family, my friends, my community, the people of Israel, and on the behalf of the Simon Wiesenthal Center, ignorance nation that for decades has been committed to confronting hatred, promoting human rights, and defending the safety and security of the Jewish people worldwide. We stand here in support of Alderman Deborah Silverstein's resolution that asks this council to condemn the massacre of Israeli civilians and recognizes the right of Israel, a sovereign nation to defend its citizens and uphold the value of democracy. Simon Wiesenthal, after whom our center is named, is a Holocaust survivor who lost 89 members of his family and devoted his life to ensuring the atrocities of the Holocaust were neither forgotten nor repeated. We have not seen brutality and murder of the Jewish people like this since the Holocaust. Hamas has been designated a terrorist organization by most of the world's countries, including the United States. Their brutality and complete inhumanity towards Israeli civilians, ordinary people like every one of us in this room, was not just a blow to the sovereign state of Israel, but to the Jewish people. Nearly half of the Jewish population worldwide lives in Israel and only the Jewish state in the world. Like the U.S., after 9/11, the State of Israel has an unequivocal right and moral obligation to protect its citizens from Hamas and other threats. Hamas is using Israeli, American, and its own civilians as human shields while also calling for jihad, not just against Israel but against Jews worldwide. United States Secretary of State Antony Blinken said Hamas's countless acts of terror brings to mind the worst of ISIS: bodies slaughtered, bodies desecrated, young people burnt alive, women raped, parents executed in front of their children, children in front of their parents. There was no legitimate justification or equivalence for this brutality. Alderman Silverstein's resolution represents an unyielding stand against terrorism and deliberate targeting of civilians, similar to President Biden's own statements, and sends a message to the city's Jewish citizens and the world that the City of Chicago has not turned its back on them. Martin Luther King Jr. said, "In the end, we will remember not the words of our enemies, but the silence of our friends." The Simon Wiesenthal Center asks this council to not be silent. We urge all members to support this resolution that condemns terrorism and to stand in solidarity with Israel and its people, just as you would any other country who was attacked by terrorists. Simon Wiesenthal said, "The history of man is the history of crimes, and history can repeat." We are witnessing the history of the Holocaust repeat itself. Never again cannot be empty words. You have the power to officially condemn these barbaric acts of terrorism. Be resolute. It should be easy to condemn terrorist attacks against innocent civilians. In Gattari Trust, thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Nazak.
Good afternoon.
I am Nazak of the U.S. Palestinian Community Network. The definition of genocide is the deliberate killing of large numbers of people from a particular nation or ethnic group with the aim of destroying that nation or group. Israel has announced its intention to empty Gaza of its inhabitants, and this, according to the definition, is genocide. Israel is committing war crimes every minute, and this is not the first time Israel violates international law to commit atrocities on the Palestinian people. Almost 2,000 Palestinians, 500 of whom are children, were killed in Gaza in the last week with white phosphorus bombs, which is in violation of international law. The media, politicians like Silverstein, Ray Lopez, and the West as a whole now have blood on their hands as they justify actual documented mass murder of Palestinians, including children. The Palestinian population, millions of people under occupation by Israel, live under constant harassment, violent arrests, brutal violence, and ethnic cleansing. This brutal violence isn't new, as we have always known the realities of our people on the ground, living under a vicious apartheid regime, and we understand what they are facing. Your support of this resolution today is supporting Israel's genocidal actions against the Palestinian people. It is absolutely hypocritical and shameful to have a resolution to condemn Israeli violence--or Palestinian violence-- but to not have passed a resolution condemning the decades of Israeli brutality and violations of Palestinian national and human rights. Murdering women, children, and entire families in Gaza is not ethical. Bombing hospitals, schools, medical centers, and cutting off power, food, medical aid, and access to clean water is not ethical. This resolution does not address the suffering of the Palestinian people and their demands for liberation. As occupied people, international law gives us the right to resist illegal and military occupation by any and all means necessary. Your selective rage is shameful, and it is racist, and we will remember every person who supports this resolution as a coward. No liberation movement has ever won their liberation by waiting for others to liberate them or by surrendering to their oppressors. We are not here to ask you to do the right thing. We are here to challenge Zionism and its supporters because we know that violence does not end until we end the Zionist occupation and the colonization of Palestine and all Arab lands. Mayor Johnson, please don't forget your commitments to our community who organize Arabs for Brandon and work to elect you as our progressive champion. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Mr. Clerk, please call the last speaker.
Last speaker today is Richard Silverman.
Hi, everyone. Good afternoon, Mayor Johnson.
Good afternoon.
And I want to thank you for the opportunity to address this council. I'm a Chicagoan, an American, and a proud Jew. I stand here today as someone who has brothers, sisters, nieces, nephews, friends, and family who have been killed, taken hostage, fired upon, and terrorized by Hamas. I stand here today in strong support of Alderman Silverstein's brave resolution that asks us to step forward today as a city to condemn hate, to support democracy, and to stand for what is right, to say never again. October 7th was not only one of the darkest days in Jewish history, it is one of the darkest days in world history. Not since the Holocaust has there been a greater massacre of Jewish civilians. Families ripped apart, grandmothers and grandfathers shot dead, babies decapitated, and youths massacred and taken hostage from a music festival held to celebrate love and peace. This is pure, sheer, unadulterated evil. The world, at all levels of government halls across the world, needs to take a stand and say, this is not acceptable. To say, we cannot stand silent--
Hold the time for a second. Stop the time. Hold on. Hold on. Hold on. It's the last speaker. A little more maturity. Just a little more. Snap. Finish speaking. Clap, and then we move forward. Continue, sir.
This resolution is not about a conflict over land. It is not about a political issue. It is about saying to the world that Chicago stands for what is right. Chicago stands against hate and terror. This is simply about condemning, without equivocation, without justification, and without explanation, a deliberate, massive, murderous attack on the Jewish people simply for being Jewish and daring to live in our people's historic homeland. As this council well knows, the threat of Hamas is not only to Israel and the Jewish people, it is to the entire world. That includes our Muslim cousins and friends. They hold their own people hostage, using civilians as human shields, spreading misinformation, and prohibiting people from leaving Gaza. The tragedy of blood spilled in Gaza is on their hands. It should be easy to pass this resolution. This should be the easiest thing you all do for your entire city council term. I often ask myself, how did the world allow the Nazis to rise to power and allow the Holocaust to happen? How did the world Nazi and not intervene? As I stand here today, seeing the number of people that have spoken out over the course of this whole week across the world and in our city in support of Hamas, and the people who've spoken out today against a clear, unqualified, and unequivocal statement that simply condemns Hamas terror, I now know the answer. Esteemed members of this council, I leave you today with a choice to choose between the forces of evil and those that oppose it. For the sake of our city and its residents, I hope you make the correct one. Thank you for your consideration, and am Yisrael Chai.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much for your comments.
Does this conclude our public speakers?
Your Honor, there are no further public speakers. You have finally signed up for the public comment period.
Thank you very much. This concludes our public speaking. There are Alders that have arrived since the initial roll call of quorum. Alder Clay Cruz Rodriguez, do you all wish to be added? Rodriguez is not in here anymore. Clay and Cruz, do you wish to be added? Okay. Okay, I don't--no, there's no confusion. I just wasn't sure that you were part of the initial roll call. Clay, she's not in here anymore, or neither is Rodriguez. Okay, I will use this time then to recognize two state-elected officials. Chair recognizes and greets State Representative Bob Morgan and State Senator Sarah Feigenhaus. Okay. Alders Clay and Rodriguez have returned. Do you both wish to-- Alders Clay and Rodriguez have returned. Do you both wish to be added to part of the roll call? Please, Mr. Clerk, please add Alders Clay and Rodriguez to the roll call as well as Alderman Beal. Were there any other Alders that were not here part of the initial roll call that wish to be added? Very well. Oh, Alder Scott, you have already been added. You were part of the initial roll call. Thank you very much. Thank you. Chair recognizes Alder Woman Silverstein. Thank you. Thank you very much. Alder Woman Silverstein.
Mr. President, I move for the temporary suspension of the rules for the immediate consideration of a resolution condemning Hamas's attack on Israel.
Hearing no objections, so order.
I object. Mr. President, I object. Call the roll, please. This should be a roll call.
Madam Clerk, roll call. Chair recognizes Alderman Burnett.
Yeah, Mr. President, just clarification on the roll call.
Yeah, this is clarification for the motion to suspend the rules for immediate consideration of a resolution condemning Hamas's attack on Israel. Madam Clerk. Mr. Clerk. Who's... I'm sorry. Madam Clerk. Chair recognizes Alderman Spazado.
Thank you, Mr. President. So a yes is to allow her to introduce it, a no is to not allow her to introduce it.
A yes is to suspend the rules.
Okay.
To enable consideration for it.
Okay.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Okay, the voting is now open. Please cast your vote. If you're having difficulty, please hit refresh. If you're having difficulty, please raise your hand and someone will assist.
Do you have a list of who's online? That's fine. That's fine. That's fine.
What a shame. What a shame.
Okay, I will now call on those who have not cast their vote. Alderman Dow, not present. Alderman Yancy? Alderman Yancy, not present. Alderman Mitchell? Alderman Mitchell, not present. Alderman Moore? Alderman Moore, not present. Alderman Curtis? Alderman Curtis, not present. Alderwoman Taylor?
No.
Alderwoman Taylor is a no. Alderman Mosley?
Yes.
Alderman Mosley is a yes. Alderman Rodriguez? Alderman Rodriguez is not present in chambers. Alderwoman Scott? I'm sorry, can you say that one more time, Alderwoman? Alderwoman Scott is a yes. Alderperson Rodriguez Sanchez?
No.
Alderperson Rodriguez Sanchez is a no. Alderperson Ramirez Rosa, not present. Alderwoman Mitz, not present. Alderperson Vasquez? Not present. Alderman Napolitano, not present. Alderperson Manai Hoppinworth, not present. Voting is now closed.
Oh, this is Alderman Yancy. Somehow I got marked as an absent.
All right, Alderman Yancy, would you like to cast your vote for a motion to suspend the rules?
Yes.
You're a yes?
Yes.
Okay. Please add Alderman Yancy as a yes. Voting is now closed.
Chair recognizes Alder Lopez.
Alderman Robinson.
Thank you, Mr. President. According to our rules, all members in the room must vote, and we're missing one vote.
Sorry, I missed... Alderman Robinson, what is your vote? Alderman Robinson is a yes. All right. Okay, now voting is closed.
Thank you very much. Voting is now closed. Thirty-three yeas, seven nays. So the motion to suspend the rules has failed. So in this regard, we can still continue to debate and discuss this matter, but we do not have the suspension of rules in order to cast a vote. So we can move forward and proceed with debate and discussion, but we do not have the... We do not have the suspension of rules to be able to actually vote. Alder... Alderwoman Silverstein, do you wish to continue to speak to this resolution? Okay, one second. The chair recognizes... The chair recognizes Alderman Irvin.
Uh, per our rules, there are two-thirds of members present for rule suspension versus two-thirds of the council of people were present. But according to Robert's rules, two-thirds of those that are here, which our number would not be 34 because we do have some that are absent.
Thank you, Alderman Irvin. One second, please. The chair recognizes Alderman Beal first. You okay? He'll defer. The chair recognizes Alderwoman Silverstein.
I'd like to renew my motion to suspend the rules now that there's more people in the body.
Just one second. So your motion, you wish to renew your motion to suspend the rules. One moment. All right, in the opinion of the chair, that is allowed. So there's a motion by Alderwoman Silverstein to renew her motion for the suspension of the rules for the immediate consideration of the resolution condemning Hamas's attack on Israel. Madam Clerk, there's been a roll call. Madam Clerk, thank you.
You're fine. Take a breath. Okay, we have some time. We just have to take a deep breath. Okay, but we have to wait for justice. Want me to have them vote, or you want to wait until justice?
Voting is now open. Please hit refresh.
Chair recognizes Alderman Beal.
Mr. President, we never had a motion to reconsider that last vote, so that last vote is still open. That's first. And number two, Mr. President, under our rules and bylaws, we are at 33. Mr. President, you can cast a vote to break and get us to 34 if you so choose.
Thank you, Mr. Alderman Beal. We are in the middle of a vote. According to our rules, you cannot debate in the middle of a vote. The vote is already in motion. Thank you.
I will now call on those who have not marked themselves. Alderperson Laspada? Alderperson Laspada is a yes. Alderperson Robinson? Alderperson Robinson is a no. Alderman Yancy?
Yes.
Alderman Yancy is a yes. Alderwoman Gutierrez? Not present. Alderman Moore? Alderwoman Taylor?
No.
Alderwoman Taylor is a no. Alderman Mosley?
Yes.
Alderman Mosley is a yes. Alderwoman Scott?
Yes.
Alderwoman Scott is a yes. Alderperson Rodriguez Sanchez?
No.
Alderperson Rodriguez Sanchez is a no. We've got everyone who's in the chambers. Voting is now closed.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. There are 33 yeas, and there are eight nays. So the motion to suspend the rules for a resolution condemning Hamas's attack on Israel, that motion has failed. Is there a motion to reconsider? The chair recognizes Alderman Beal.
I disagree that we need 34 votes on an item that was posted in a timely manner within 48 hours. This is not anything special and out of the norm, so we only need 26, and with that, I appeal the ruling of the chair.
Alderman Beal has... Has appealed the ruling of the chair. Shall the chair's ruling be sustained? So the question is, should the ruling of the chair be sustained that we need 34 votes in order to suspend the rules? We can do it by... The chair recognizes Alderman Irvin.
Thank you, Mr. President. And at this question, the appeal to the chair, does it require a two-thirds vote or a simple majority vote, given that the ruling that we're talking about required a two-thirds vote?
So for this one, thank you, Mr. Alderman Irvin. This one just simply calls for a simple majority.
Thank you.
The chair recognizes Alderman Spazado.
Thank you, Mr. President. My question would be, is it two-thirds of the 43 that are here, or is it two-thirds of the 50? It should be two-thirds of the 43, correct?
No, our rule says three-fourths of the entire body.
Okay.
Two-thirds, I'm sorry. Two-thirds of the entire body, but again, the question on the floor at this moment is, shall the ruling of the chair be sustained? Which my ruling is that it requires 34 votes in order to suspend the rules. We can do it by... Okay, so the question and the voting that is now available to you, let's just do it by roll call. Is that okay? Any objections to that? So there's a roll call vote for sustaining the ruling of the chair requiring 34 yeses in order to suspend the rules to take up for immediate consideration. One moment, please. I see you, Mr. O'Shea. So before I recognize Alderman O'Shea, just for clarity, a no vote allows for this resolution to be read and considered and voted on. You would be overriding my ruling. The chair recognizes Alderman O'Shea.
Mr. President, I would just ask that we lock the door so that no one else can leave?
I don't know how to even respond to that motion. But the chair recognizes Alderman Irvin.
Thank you, Mr. President. Your ruling that you made based on which rule number, could that rule be read so we're all clear on what we're talking about here?
I would ask the parliamentarian to read the rule that we're referring to that requires 34 yes votes in order to suspend the rules. Thirty-four yes votes to suspend the rules, 34 votes for the entire body, which is 50. We'll do that. Rule number 48, these rules may be temporarily suspended by a vote of two-thirds of all alderpersons entitled by law to be elected and shall not be repealed, altered, or amended unless concurrence of a majority of all of the alderpersons entitled by law to be elected. So again, a yes vote means you are in agreement with that rule, which would require 34 yes votes. A no vote means you wish to override my ruling and proceed with the resolution. Madam Clerk.
Voting is now open. Please hit refresh, and please mark your vote. If you need help, please raise your hand. Okay, I will now call on those who have not marked themselves. Alderman Yancy?
Yes.
Alderman Yancy is a yes. Alderwoman Coleman? Okay, she's marked. Alderman David Moore? Not present. Alderman O'Shea? Alderman O'Shea is a no. Alderwoman Taylor?
Yes.
Alderwoman Taylor is a yes. Alderman Mosley?
Yes.
Alderman Mosley is a yes. Alderwoman Scott?
Yes.
Alderwoman Scott is a yes. Alderman Irvin? You marked yourself. Alderperson Rodriguez Sanchez?
Yes.
Alderperson Rodriguez Sanchez is a yes. Everyone in chambers and remote... Alderman Ramirez Rosa is a yes. Everyone in chambers has been marked. Alderperson Ramirez Rosa, we're marking you right now. Voting is closed. Please mark. I know, he's a yes. So, it'll be nineteen yeas, twenty-four nays. It's okay, take a minute. You guys are doing a great job. So, now, mark him as a yes. Okay, voting is closed.
Oh.
I'm sorry?
So, this is Alderman Scott, point of information. If I said yes, that means that I'm confused. So, can you explain to me what my yes vote is again?
Saying yes does not mean you're confused. So, let's start there. Alder Woman Scott, so, a yes on this vote, you wish, you agree that the opinion of the Chair requires thirty-four votes to suspend the rules. If you vote no, you wish to continue with this resolution and you wish to override the opinion of the Chair, which is me. So, a no vote is you are voting to overrule the opinion of the Chair.
Okay, no.
Alder Woman Scott, your vote is no?
Yes.
So, Alder Woman Scott votes no, correct? Correct. Okay. Okay, voting is now closed.
Twenty-five noes, eighteen yeas. The ruling of the Chair has been overruled. Alder Woman Harris for the motion to reconsider?
I move to reconsider the vote.
All those in favor of the reconsideration of the overruling of the Chair's opinion, signify by saying aye. Those opposed, nay. This motion fails. Madam Clerk, please read the resolution.
Whereas, on October seventh, twenty-twenty-three, terrorists launched in a horrific assault on the state of Israel from Hamas-controlled Gaza, murdering hundreds of unarmed civilians and kidnapping dozens more, including women, children, and the elderly. And whereas, the assault came fifty years after the Yom Kippur War, another heinous attack on Israel, and as Jews in Israel and the diaspora celebrated the holidays of Sukkot and Shemini Atzeret, Simchat Torah. And whereas, Hamas terrorists crossed the border into Israel and began the wholesale slaughter of unarmed civilians throughout the south of Israel, killing at least six hundred innocent people in twenty-four hours in what was likely the bloodiest day for world jewelry since the Holocaust. And whereas, the attack was shocking in its brutality and cruelty, seeing the murder and abduction of innocent babies while parents were gunned down in front of their children in a slaughter, the scope of which has hardly been seen since the terrorist attacks against the United States on September eleventh, two thousand and one. And whereas, since October seventh, twenty-twenty-three, the death toll in Israel has grown to more than one thousand and is continually rising, including at least two hundred and sixty innocent people murdered at the Tribe of Nova Music Festival, the worst civilian massacre in Israel's history. And nearly three thousand Israelis injured to date, devastating number in a country as small as Israel. And whereas, Hamas terrorists kidnapped dozens of innocent civilians, including women, children, and infants from Israel, and forced them across the border into Gaza to be used as human shields and bargaining chips in the furtherance of future attacks. And whereas, the Hamas terrorist attack has been accompanied by thousands of missiles launched from Gaza against indiscriminate targets throughout Israel, including residential buildings, leading to more scenes of terror, horror, and death across the country. And whereas, while Hamas's attack was expressly directed at civilian Israeli targets, it has resulted in ensuing violence in Gaza that has caused the death of many innocent Palestinians as well as Hamas fighters as the violence continues to escalate. And whereas, this was an attack not just on Israel but nations across the world with murdered, kidnapped, and missing victims from multiple countries, including at least fourteen American citizens, as well as citizens of Canada, the United Kingdom, France, Thailand, Nepal, Germany, Cambodia, Brazil, Paraguay, Mexico, and Ireland. And whereas, Hamas is an internationally-recognized terrorist organization, and through the use of human shields, it is directly responsible for the deaths of hundreds of Palestinian civilians since the hostilities began. And whereas, Israel, like any other sovereign nation, has the right and obligation to protect its citizens against terrorism and attack by hostile foreign powers. Now, therefore, be it resolved, be it resolved that we, the members of City Council...
Could you please? Thank you very much. Please, thank you very much. Let's please return to order. Madam Clerk, please finish reading the resolution.
Be it resolved that we, the members of the City Council of the city of Chicago, assembled this thirteenth day of October, twenty-twenty-three, condemn this heinous terrorist attack by Hamas, stand in support of Israel, express our deepest sorrow for all innocent civilians, and pray for the safe release of all the hostages taken into Gaza.
Thank you very much. Before we move forward with alders who wish to speak, in a moment, I'm going to recognize Alder Woman Silverstein. But what I would ask this public body to do is to please allow our elected officials to complete their presentations. Please allow them without disruption. Now, I'm willing to understand your desire to agree or disagree. But what I would ask you to do is to do it with some level of cordiality. So, I would respectfully ask that this debate be carried on with a type of dignity and respect that we wish to recognize for all people, all people impacted by this conflict. Please remember... Thank you. It's not okay. Mister, excuse me, Mister Tuar... Tuar, please. Thank you. Thank you. And now, I'm doing my best to make sure that the public debate is allowed to happen. I do not wish to clear this public space. I would respectfully ask again that we allow for real public debate. If you cannot adhere to those expectations, I would ask Sergeant-at-Arms to remove you. And if I have to do that so many times, I will clear this room. That is not what I want to do. The Chair recognizes Alder Woman Silverstein. And if there are any other alders that wish to speak to this item, please raise your hand and I will acknowledge you. Alder Woman Silverstein.
Thank you, Mr. President. I stand in support of this resolution. Yesterday, I led many of you on a delegation to the Illinois Holocaust Museum. What a powerful and emotional experience. We were privileged to hear from Rhodey Glass, a Holocaust survivor and a brave hero. She shared her story of deportation, abuse, and horror in the Shoah. She remains one of the few Jewish citizens of Holland to survive the Holocaust, the rest perishing in the fires of Auschwitz. One thing she shared with us that truly resonated was that the Nazis did not attack due to any actions on the part of the Jews. Nothing we did provoked their attempted genocide. Hate often has no cause. It is a cancer, a sickness that grows when left to fester. Today, we are here to discuss a new sickness that is targeting the Jewish people, one that included horrors not inflicted on Jews since the Holocaust, Hamas's war of terror. On October seventh, Hamas terrorists burst through the Gaza security wall and rampaged across southern Israel, murdering, raping, and kidnapping civilians. Over the course of twenty-four hours, at least six hundred innocents were killed in what was the bloodiest day for world jewelry since the Holocaust. As many as a hundred and fifty civilians have also been abducted and dragged across the border into Gaza to be used as human shields and psychological torture for their families. Videos are already popping up on social media showing the terrorists delighting in torture, death, and massacre. To date, more than one thousand three hundred Israelis have been killed and more than three thousand three hundred injured. Israel has fewer citizens than the state of Illinois. Can you imagine the heartbreak and pain that thousands of casualties would cause in our state? In Israel, October seventh will always be remembered as nine eleven. I want to be clear. The current conflict and this resolution is not about Israel and Palestine. It is not about one military... It is not about one military against another. It's about...
Consider this, consider this the final warning. This is the final warning. If you continue to disrupt, I'm going to be required to remove everyone from the chamber. I do not want to do that. That is a decision that you have to make now. I've given you my final warning. Alder Woman Silverstein.
It's about Israel versus Hamas, a democratic nation versus an internationally-recognized terrorist organization. This resolution is very similar to the one that was introduced by the U.S. House of Representatives this week. Three hundred and ninety-two members signed on across party lines. Our nation is united behind the cause, and so should the Chicago City Council. For those of my colleagues who are still on the fence, I'd like to focus on some of the atrocities Hamas has carried out on October seventh. Terrorists attacked the Tribe of Nova Music Festival early Saturday morning. Hamas arrived in body armor, brandishing AK-47s and rocket-propelled grenades. They gunned down people, with many victims shot in their backs as they were running away. Other terrorists stood near the bomb shelters, waiting to shoot the people who sought refuge. At least two hundred and sixty partygoers were murdered and a still-undetermined number were taken hostage. Kibbutz Be'ari was a small town of around a thousand people. It was known for its thriving printing shop and its art galleries. So far, at least a hundred and eight bodies have been found in the kibbutz. A hundred and eight out of a thousand. More than ten percent of the population wiped out in one blood-soaked day. Goodman and Be'ari were filming, executing civilians as they begged for mercy, feeding captives, burning homes with families inside, and mutilating the bodies of their victims. Kfar Azoh was a small farming community of about seven hundred and fifty people.
Thank you. That's it. Those who are Sergeant-at-Arms, please clear. Those in the upper chambers can remain. This body will stand at ease as we clear this for five minutes as we clear this floor. Those upstairs can remain. Sergeant-at-Arms, please clear. Everyone on this, on the second floor. Every person on the second floor has to leave. Everyone on the second floor has to be removed. Everyone. You can only remain in the third-floor gallery.
[END OF TRANSCRIPT]
Every single member of the public who was on this floor must leave the floor. We are back in session. The chair recognizes Alderwoman Silverstein.
Kfar Azzah was a small farming community of about 750 people, many of them families with young children. Dozens of civilian residents were murdered in their own homes, babies killed in their cribs. The IDF reported that bodies of about 40 babies were found in Kfar Azzah. I’m going to say that again to let it sink in. Hamas terrorists from Gaza broke into the Israeli town and murdered dozens of babies in their own homes. Not just Israelis have been harmed in this conflict. Hamas murdered and kidnapped victims from multiple countries, including at least 14 American cities... 14 American citizens, as well as citizens of Canada, the United Kingdom, France, Thailand, Nepal, Germany, Cambodia, Brazil, Paraguay, Mexico, and Ireland. Two Evanston residents are currently missing and believed to be hostages held by Hamas. Natalie Renan and her mother Judith live just a few miles from this very hall, yet right now, they may be huddling in a dank Gazan dungeon, unsure if they’ll live to see another day. Many local residents have been touched by the fighting. Most of the Jewish community in the 50th Ward have loved ones and family in Israel. I personally have two nephews, cousins, and other family members that have been called up to reserve duty to fight the IDF against terror. My nephew left his two-week-old baby behind to fight on the front lines and protect his people. To quote President Joe Biden, “There are moments in this life when a pure, unadulterated evil is unleashed on this world.” The people of Israel lived through one such moment this weekend at the bloody hands of the terrorist organization Hamas, a group whose stated purpose for being is to kill Jews. Again, Hamas is a group whose stated purpose for being is to kill Jews. I urge my colleagues to be on the right side of history and to take a stand against Hamas’s evil. The United States of America stands with Israel. President Biden and Vice President Harris stand with Israel. Former Presidents Obama and Clinton stand with Israel. 392 members of the U.S. House of Representatives stand with Israel. Governor Pritzker stands with Israel. It’s time now for Chicago to show our unequivocal support for the state of Israel as it deals with one of the worst terrorist attacks in human history. I’m Yisroel Chai. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderwoman Silverstein. The chair recognizes Alderman O’Shea. He’s not on the floor. The chair recognizes Alderman Lawson.
Thank you, Mr. President. I rise to be a strong supporter of this resolution. I am horrified, outraged, and heartbroken by the heinous terrorist attacks in Israel this past weekend. Hundreds of innocent families, children, and elderly were brutally murdered, and there are more than 150 people still being held hostage, including a mother and daughter from Evanston. That’s more than 150 families living a nightmare as they hope and pray for their loved ones’ return home to safety. Yesterday, I had the good fortune of beginning my day at the Holocaust Museum in Skokie, and I ended it at Temple Anshe Emet in my neighborhood. I want to thank you, Mayor, for being there to give your support and words of compassion to the Jewish community in my neighborhood, and also to Alderwoman Silverstein for her leadership on this issue. There were over 1,500 of my neighbors gathered to pray for peace, to pray for Israel, to pray for those innocents on both sides. There is fear in this community, in my community, about what may happen today and beyond, as businesses, religious organizations, and institutions feel targeted, especially in this country. I cannot agree with anyone who attempts to justify these unspeakable actions. It is wrong, plain and simple. This is terrorism, and no one should be afraid to call it what it is. We can disagree with the policies of the Israeli government, just as we disagree with our own government. That’s a hallmark of democracy. But we should all be able to separate those disagreements from what we’ve seen in recent days with our own eyes and stand together to show our support for the people of Israel, Israel’s right to exist and defend itself. Because we know that if we don’t, Hamas and other terrorist organizations will continue their mission to destroy Israel and the Jewish people. Again, I want to thank you, Deborah Silverstein, my friend and colleague. I told you when we were with the Jewish-American resolution in May, you may be the only Jewish member, but you will never be alone, will always have your back, and that’s what my community demands. So, thank you for bringing this forward. Thank you to all my colleagues and cosponsors.
Thank you, Alderman. The chair recognizes Alderman Laspada.
Mr. President, in sharing my reflections on this resolution and the conflict it speaks to, I want to be clear that these are my own personal beliefs. They should not be construed as belonging to my staff or any organization, nor has any organization made statements that I vetted or co-wrote. I don’t usually write my thoughts for you, but I want to be very specific and clear in my words. I wholeheartedly and unequivocally condemn the violence and terrorism committed by Hamas. It has been shocking, heinous, and in no possible way justified. The barbarism and terror committed by this organization is nearly beyond comprehension. I cannot conceive of what it is to experience such atrocities, particularly as a people against whom so many atrocities have been committed across history. Specifically, I grieve with one of our First Ward residents, whose extended family includes three individuals who were taken hostage from a kibbutz. I earnestly hope and pray for their safe return. I also grieve and call for an end to the economic, cultural, structural, and fiscal violence that has been committed against the Palestinian people by the government of Israel, particularly those in violation of the Geneva Conventions and various UN resolutions. To see your homes, hospitals, schools, and houses of worship destroyed on top of years of complete economic blockade profoundly saddened me. Again, I cannot conceive of what it is to experience this violence, particularly, again, as a people whom this violence has been committed against for decades. As a city committed to ending homelessness, I particularly pray for the hundreds of thousands of Palestinians who have been left homeless by this violence. I do not believe it is anti-Semitic to be critical of the actions of the Israeli government. I do believe one can uphold and uplift the Palestinian people while condemning and denouncing Hamas. Despite the insistence of some otherwise, I believe it is impossible and irresponsible to divorce this moment from the decades-long conflict that has wrecked destruction against the people of Palestine and Israel alike. Nothing we are witnessing will result in anything approximating peace, except in the sense of which Tessa spoke, “They make it a desert and call it peace.” Any true peace is not only the cessation of violence, but the right of both nations to exist prosperous, autonomous, and free. While I lack the professional power to shape this, while I sadly will never expect it, I will never stop hoping and advocating for it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The chair recognizes Alderman Beal.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, I too rise to support this resolution and to support my colleague of the 50th Ward. I reached out to her when the attack happened to give her my condolences, and she told me that several of her relatives were being called up for duty. That hit home with me, so I can just imagine how she feels. No matter which way you all feel about this issue, the issue is wrong. It was wrong for Israel to be attacked by Hamas. We would not be talking about this issue today if Hamas had not attacked Israel. Now, when you look at the abuse that my colleague has taken, that’s wrong. And we need to continue to stand with her and hold her up from the attacks, the verbal attacks, because none of us want to be in her shoes. So hopefully, all of you all reach out to her and give her your unwavering support to stand strong, because that’s what she’s doing. Thank you so much for standing strong, Alderman. But I also want to remind everybody here: There are attacks in our community every single day. I wish we had this kind of anger about the black and brown people that are being killed every single day in this city. If people were this mad to take action on what’s happening in Chicago, Chicago would be a much better place to live and play. And so think about it: If Alderman Silverstein today, it could be one of you all tomorrow getting attacked. So we’re obligated to support one another. Put down your feelings. Stay off of social media. Quit spewing stuff to fuel the fire on social media. That’s what got us here today: People fueling the fire on social media. And those same people ain’t even here today, because they can’t face the fire. Stand up and face the fire. If Alderman Silverstein can sit up and take it with her broad shoulders, so can you, throwing a rock and hat in your hand. So I’m livid for my colleague. I’m livid for this city, because this was an embarrassment today. We should have talked about this Wednesday, and we’d have been done with this issue, and we’d have been enjoying our vacation over the weekend. But we’re here today to talk about this travesty that’s happening in this country, in this world. We have to stand up for injustice, y’all, wherever it is. Don’t sit on the sideline when you see injustice happening to anybody. Stand up. Take a position to support people who are being attacked. Who was the first person that stood up for the United States when 9/11 happened? It was Israel. It was Israel that stood up when we got bombed at 9/11. They were the first ones to step up and say, “Whatever the United States needs, we’re here to help. We’re here to stand with you all.” How are we going to turn our back on them when they need us right now? So, I’m just going to close by telling my colleagues, number one, stay off social media, because you ain’t helping the situation. You’re fueling the fire. I don’t care how you feel. They always say, “When you send a text message, read it before you send it.” Read that text or that tweet before you send it, because you might be offending somebody. So, my colleagues, again, thank you so much for giving me a few minutes to just vent, but I stand with Israel 1,000% against Hamas.
Thank you, Alderman Beal. Alderman O’Shea has returned. The chair recognizes Alderman O’Shea.
Thank you, Mr. President. I too rise and support this resolution. Ladies and gentlemen, I am of Irish descent, which means I share a common history with both the Israeli and Palestinian people. All of our ancestors, at one point or another, have been victims of British colonialism. In Ireland, British rule persisted for centuries. The English took control of land. They stripped it of its natural resources. They stripped the Irish people of their right to self-determination, their native language, and they tried unsuccessfully to strip them of their religion. Finally, they forced a political partition of Ireland, a condition that still exists today. That partition has inspired horrible violence in Northern Ireland that many of us remember during our lifetime and before. And although I’m well aware of that history... And although I'm well aware of that history, behind that violence, I have never once condoned that violence, and I've never once tried to offer excuses for it, because violence, terrorism, pure and simple, is never, ever justified. It is terrorism, and that violence should be condemned, whether it happens in Europe, the Middle East, or right here in our United States. Our first instinct when confronted with this type of violence should always be to loudly and clearly reject it, not make excuses, not try to explain it away. We should do that as both individuals and as a united city council. That is why I stand in support of my colleague, Alderman Deb Silverstein, and this resolution. Deb, I offer you and your community my support, the entire 19th Ward, my prayers are with you, with Israel, with Jewish people everywhere. Thank you.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Aldo Fuentes.
It is the most difficult position to be in, in this room, because no one should be here divisive. Deb, I'm sorry that there are people that you love that have to serve, that live in Condemning violence here is not the question. It's not. I think that every Alder in this room would condemn the violence that we seen over the No innocent child, no person we love, should be hurt or killed because of who they are. If I'm going to stand here today and I'm going to condemn Hamas for the terror and the violence that ensued in Israel, then I'm also going to condemn settler colonialism and occupation and forced eviction, and I'm going to condemn the operation of the largest airborne prison in Gaza that holds children and families and mothers, where there are two ports of entry that control water and food, where electricity will be shut off, where families have been forced into and have lost their homes. I condemn violence and I won't support genocide. You see, we're in a moment where our movement and our government can't have a conversation about how two people can share land. But we can. We can try to facilitate a conversation, where we could talk about the freedom of Palestine and not be anti-Semitic, where we could protect Jews against neo-Nazis and not forget our Palestinian siblings. We can do both. But that's not the conversation we've chosen to have today. Some people will take media interviews from this body, and they will spin a narrative about the left, about the progressive movement. But I am very clear about who I am. I believe in the freedom of Palestine, and I believe that we protect our Jewish siblings. And we can believe and do both. And so today, I condemn the violence of Hamas, but I cannot stand with the government of Israel, because they will ensue violence and genocide on people. And if we are going to condemn violence, we need to condemn it all around and live in a world in which we are begging and pleading and facilitating a conversation for peace. I stand with the people of Israel, the innocent people who are impacted, not the government that seeks to sue murder and genocide. And for that reason, and the only reason, I cannot support this resolution today. But Alderman Silverstein, I will always, always be in solidarity with you. I will always be someone who seeks to protect our Jewish siblings, but I will also fight with my Palestinian siblings for the freedom of Palestine. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Aldo Rodriguez Sanchez.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is an incredibly hard debate to be having on the floor of council. First, I want to apologize that I am not there in person. I truly believe that we should be working for peace. I am currently in Milwaukee with Milwaukee Public Schools, and I am in a training for restorative justice, trying to bring some of that learning and that some working for peace to the schools in my community. So I apologize that I couldn't be there. This trip was planned about three months in advance. I am sorry beyond words for all the pain that both the Jewish community and the Palestinian community are experiencing right now. They are all part of our communities. I think condemning the violence that took place in Israel, the horrific violence that took place in Israel by Hamas, is something that we are all united on. There is no doubt. No civilian should ever be killed. But that is not the only thing that this resolution does. This resolution also asks this body to put the name of the city of Chicago to be in support of the government of Israel. And I have heard several of my colleagues saying, that's not what this is about, but it says it in the resolution, that we, the members of the city council, stand in support of Israel. At the time that Israel is dropping bombs in Gaza, at the time that Palestinians are getting displaced, at the time that 1.1 million Palestinians were given 24 hours to be able If we are against violence, we are against all kinds of violence, and we need to be in solidarity with our Palestinian brothers and sisters as well. That's not what this resolution says or does. Just like my colleague from 26th Ward says, Deborah, we are incredibly sorry for the pain that you are experiencing and the pain that the Jewish community is experiencing right now. And we stand in solidarity with our Jewish siblings, and Chicago is always going to be a sanctuary for Jewish people, and we are going to work towards that always. But that cannot be at the expense of the lives of Palestinian people. The name of Chicago should not be signed on to commit genocide. So if there's a voice vote on this resolution, I want to be recorded as a no. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Alderman Hopkins.
Thank you, Mr. President. I rise and supported this resolution and in steadfast support of my colleague, the Alderman from the 50th Ward, for her resolve, her courage in the face of everything that we're contending with right now. My support is unequivocal, and I find it puzzling that so many are struggling with that. And we've just heard from some who sound like they're supporting it, but there's unequivocation there. It shouldn't be hard to condemn terrorism. It shouldn't be hard to condemn the murder of children. It should be easy. It's easy for me. I've been doing it my whole life, as a matter of fact. I learned how to do it in high school. I was in high school in 1979 during the Iranian hostage crisis. Now, that was a long time ago, but I remember this nation's reaction to that. There was no equivocation. The nation was unified. In fact, there were protests across the country, on college campuses. America stood united in resolve that that was a wrong, immoral act. We didn't say we deserved it. We didn't say we asked for it. We didn't question our country's foreign affairs. We simply said that was a criminal act, and those 52 Americans that were being held as human shields against their will were the true victims. 20-plus years later, it happened again on 9/11. I was actually here. I was here in this building when the towers fell. I wasn't in New York, but I got there as quickly as I could. I arrived in New York, ground zero, on September 14th, 2001, Friday. And I saw a United Nation at that time, once again. There was no equivocation. We didn't say that was a terrible thing that happened to us, but maybe we deserved it. Maybe we should look at the nuance. Maybe we should look at the subtleties. Maybe we should question the validity of our nation and our country. That didn't happen. We simply condemned an act of terrorist murder. And now here we are, 20-plus years later, and we seem to have lost our ability to do that. How did that happen? We have Marxist organizations in this town right now putting pictures of gliders on their material as a symbol of support for the murder that took place on October 7th. I've seen it. I have an article here from the Washington Post. The Washington Post did some remarkable work, and they identified 64 hostages that are currently being held in Gaza right now by Hamas. The estimates are more than that. The Israeli government claims it's like 150, but the Washington Post found 64 people. Much of the video evidence that they reviewed was provided by Hamas terrorists themselves. They actually filmed what they were doing, because they want the world to see. Here's where I'm going to equivocate, because I watched all those videos, and there are moments, ladies and gentlemen, where I regret that decision, because it's the hardest thing I've done, and it's the worst thing I've ever seen in my life. There's other times when I know I had to do it, because we can't close our eyes to what happened. We can't look away. Out of those 64 people that the Washington Post tracked, nine of them were children. Nine of them were children, and they were tortured as they were taken away. And their fate is undetermined at this moment. We assume they might be alive, being used as human shields. How can you equivocate, condemn that? That is immoral. That is sickening. That is wrong, and there's no excuse. There's no validity to the justification that I've heard in this room, trying to cover I don't know where this is headed. I don't believe we were at war on October 6th, but I think we are now. I think we're in serious trouble as a nation, as a world, as a people, and we've lost our moral compass when we can't look at intentional murder and rape that happened on October 7th without equivocation. I stand in full support, unequivocal support of my colleague on this resolution. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Aldo Sico Lopez.
What a tragedy we see in front of us. I encourage my colleagues not to accept the mainstream framing of what's happening. This is not Israeli people versus Palestinian people. This is people versus armed dealers and their corrupt front men. And I'll be very clear with that. The violence against Israelis this past weekend is worthy of condemnation, of course, as our colleague Jesse Fuentes said. The Israeli people are entitled to a government that protects their safety, a government that protects their safety, but genocide is no self-defense. And genocide against Palestinians in Gaza should never be justified. We have half of the population in Gaza that are children. Should never be penalized, or worse, dehumanized, the ways we've seen. Netanyahu, the Prime Minister, has been protested by his own people because of precisely what his corrupt actions have led to, inflamed tensions and more violence. He has a duty to protect his people from violence the way that we in the city of Chicago elected a new mayor to do, and is to address the root causes of violence. And in that, we can tie those armed dealers that also continue to profit in our city. So as we will never allow the dehumanization of our own children, we do not condemn, we do not allow the dehumanization of anyone. And to address the root causes of this violence, it is clear that the occupation must end. Instead, Netanyahu has violated international law daily with impunity and complicity from American politicians that are also in bed with armed dealers and fossil fuel interests who profit from the conflict, who profit from the war, and who profit from our suffering. The Israeli civilians are the ones who want peace. Palestinians need peace, because we speak, the hospitals with babies in the NICU, and we see that in front of us. Kids with no electricity, they don't have a place to store, they don't even have a place to store bodies. That's a tragic disease. This body needs to call on Netanyahu and the Western powers to stop this genocidal siege and respect the humanity of civilians and children in Gaza and put an end to the desire of revenge, because as Gandhi said, an eye bore an eye, and we'll all be blind. And that's exactly what's happening. We're blind. And we're blind for profit. If we want peace, we must demand the ending of the violence from the root and the ending of the occupation. Free Palestine and free all the people from its endless cycle of violence, profiting armed dealers and fossil fuel industries that here form packs in our own community and spread the same violence that we see in other parts of the world. So we do connect what's happening in Chicago and the root causes. It'll be impossible to ignore the facts, and these are the facts. And I quote, "Anyone who wants to deward the establishment of Palestinian state has to support the bolstering of Hamas and transferring money to Hamas." That's what Prime Minister Netanyahu said in May of 2019. That is a fact. And this is further when, this is part of the strategy, to isolate Palestinians in Gaza from the Palestinians in the West Bank. Any resolution ignoring the full humanity of Palestinian people, just like we rightfully acknowledge the full acknowledge the full humanity of the Israeli people, is non-negotiable. We must pass a resolution in accordance with the fact that we all humans are endowed with inevitable rights from our Creator. And anyone who seeks to alienate us from those rights for any reason is committing a crime and an atrocity in front of our very eyes. Yesterday, we also attended with a colleague, Aldwin Silverstein, to remind the atrocity of the Holocaust and let cruelty not dominate our future and the future of our children. I want to especially recognize the many numbers on Congress or Congresswoman Delia Ramirez, who also posed a similar resolution. So there is dissent, and there is resilience. And I explain to you why. The wonderful young people that we heard cry desperate for elected officials to listen and to listen to facts. Those are the beautiful people that are also part of our community. People of Mexican descent and Palestinian descent who met in communities like Pilsen, ports of entry for immigrants, same immigrants that are dehumanized as well for fleeing violence. So when does the end of this cycle? When does it finish? And the council has a decision to make to start doing the job of the people or allow those campaign contributions to buy our consciousness. I, for one, don't have the consciousness to deliberately and against the fact and against the international community, stand with the wrong thing to do, and this is a call also for President Biden, to be a leader and not embolden genocide. So today, we say we're in solidarity with Israeli people and Palestinian people, both victims of the addiction on fossil fuel industry by politicians as well as armed dealers. And today, I stand against and for that very reason this resolution and asking our colleagues, do we want our blood in our hands or do we want a better future here in Chicago and beyond? So today, we say, "Free, free Palestine." Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman. The chair recognizes Alderman Will Hall.
Thank you, Mr. President. This morning, in my devotion, I turned to a familiar passage of scripture. The question was raised, "Where's your brother? Your blood is speaking." His brother, his blood is speaking, brother. The blood that is crying from the ground. I say it again. The passage read, "Where's your brother? The voice of your brother's blood is speaking from the ground." Having walked through the gas chambers in Auschwitz, having looked at the eyes of so many who still are traumatized by what they've been told and what they've seen, and at the same time, looking in the eyes of those on 75th Street who are afraid to leave and to go to and from, having walked into chambers, the blood that was on that ground in Auschwitz said, "War no more." And the blood that's been shed on October 7th, "War no more." So the question now becomes, what are we listening to? And what will we do to make sure that we can stop innocent blood being shed on the ground? We come into these chambers with the heavy burden of so many people on our shoulders, but nobody wants innocent blood shed on the ground, whether it's in Gaza or 75th Street. And so I stand here today to say, any policy that leads to innocent blood being shed, I don't support. And any terrorist group that leads innocent blood on the ground, I don't support. And so may the day come that we pass policies, and may the day come that we make space so that there's no innocent blood shed on the ground. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The chair recognizes Alderman Spazado.
Thank you, Mr. President. Before I speak, I'd like to commend you. Thought you did an awesome job handling that meeting. Most of those people, I can see, wanted to get kicked out, and you gave them chance after chance after chance. Finally, you hit the boiling point, you had to kick them out. So I commend you on doing a good job. I text you, but I guess you weren't paying attention to your phone. Deb.
Now we're going to give for you, Nick.
Yeah, I'm open the floodgates now. Deb, I'd like to think that I've been one of your biggest supporter and Israel's biggest supporter around. I know, I'd like to think I was one of the first persons, people to call you, standing in support of you. So, you know, before I speak, I'm usually not worried about speaking, but Bennett, you and Brian kind of scared me a little. You guys spoke so awesome and so eloquent that I actually was thinking about chickening out today, but I felt I couldn't chick it out. So just want to make sure everybody knows I stand with Israel. As a Christian, as an American, I certainly stand with Israel. Deb, we've been friends for 12 years, but our friendship has gotten bigger over the last couple of years. I don't know why. This past week, I think we've talked as much as we did in this year so far, but it's a terrible thing. Your resolution mentioned Hamas. Out of your 11 Wareses, you mentioned Hamas, six of them. So you're not, you weren't attacking Palestinian people, you're attacking Hamas. The subhuman savages with their barbaric attack on innocent people, Americans among them, children, elderly, just disgusting. 260 people at a concert enjoying themselves. I'm sure many of them were young people, murdered. This wasn't wartime. This was an attack people. This was another 9/11. Probably, probably going by population, probably to a higher degree. I know it's hard to say that. I hope all my American friends don't get mad at me for saying that, but population-wise, the amount of people that were wiped out, just terrible. Supposedly, there's going to be public executions going on here. We can't support that. Our own president, and as most of you know, I don't agree with our president a lot. Our own president denounced this. He stands strong with Israel. Former President Obama, former President Clinton, the Bernie bros, Bernie's standing with Israel also. Just let you guys all know that. I'm sure you all know that already. I am a little sad, the Palestinians are only getting 24 hours to leave Palestine. I'm not the leader of the country. I don't know what I would have done. I would have liked to have seen them get a little bit more time, but 24 hours is 24 hours more than Israelis got before they were slaughtered. So with that, Deb, just want to say, we're friends forever. I'm sorry what you're going through. And everybody out there, it's just a disgusting act, but I stand with you 100%. God bless you. God bless Israel. And thank you, Mr. President. You've done a great job running this meeting today.
Thank you, Alderman. Are there any other? The chair recognizes Alder Lopez.
Thank you, Mr. President. Good afternoon, members of the City Council. First and foremost, I want to thank you, Mr. President, for not violating Rule 54 despite Nick's best efforts to get you on your cell phone and for maintaining the order today, which is not easy, telling the public that we have to hold them accountable for how they contain themselves here. The Chicago City Council, us, we cannot, cannot support terrorism. The Chicago City Council, again, us, cannot make excuses and apologize for Hamas. We cannot, everyone in this room, work towards manufacturing a state of ignorant bliss that ignores the coordinated planned attack against Israel that took place last week. There are many in this room and out working extremely hard to avoid grasping the true nature of the terror that was inflicted upon the people of Israel. An attack that has since left over 2,400 people dead. A loss of humanity starting at the Nova Festival, slaughtering people in their kibbutzes, where they lived as a community, for those who don't know or unfamiliar, where thousands were massacred in their homes and neighborhoods throughout the region. An attack that has resulted in over 150 people taken captive as prisoners back into Gaza by their terrorist captors, with 60 still remaining unaccounted for. This was an attack that was designed to exploit a weakness while maximizing the psychological impact on the people of Israel, on the Jewish people, and on the world. Members of this body, others throughout, that continue to try to apologize and rationalize what has happened, have been failed by their sense of contrived moral indignation. They have chosen to call the terrorists' killings nuanced, justified, or the result of policies beyond those of whatever an infant could have imagined. They have demanded that human rights and abuses to end while being silent about the victims butchered in the operation known as the Al-Aqsa Flood, which, by the way, was the same terminology and designation given to the flooding, the City Hall Flood, which we saw play out here today. We have leaders who have publicly questioned at every turn the legitimacy of the reports on the carnage that has unfolded, in some cases, in real time, thanks to the various social media platforms used by the victims. These platforms showed the world messages and videos loaded with fear, desperation, and the legitimate terror on the faces of women being paraded around after being raped, of the elderly and the affirmed abused and tortured and set on fire, of families listening and cowering in safe spaces as they heard their relatives and family pets and other neighbors being killed all around them while they were hiding in their own homes, hoping that they weren't found, hoping that their homes weren't set on fire with them in it. Too many in here and out have worked hard to manufacture a narrative that blames the victim of terror as being responsible for what has unfolded. Our colleagues today have said, "We have a duty to advocate for peaceful resolutions in the Middle East." And ladies and gentlemen, I agree, because that is not in question. We can support both the Israeli and Palestinian people as they continue to strive towards a peaceful coexistence, which is what many generations have long hoped for. However, the atrocities committed just a few short days ago are nothing short of monstrous. These actions demand consequences. Would any of us, as our colleague said, have tried to legitimize the attacks on our own country following 9/11? Would we have given excuse or safe harbor or an apology to Osama bin Laden for killing nearly 3,000 Americans so many years ago? One of our colleagues talked about going to the Holocaust Museum. And yet, here we are, some in this room and out, struggling to find ways to remain silent or apologetic towards those that seek to exterminate our human brothers once again. Actions, my friends, and our inactions, all have consequences. Attempts to intellectually conflate concepts, to mix the apples and oranges, so to speak, will only serve to give cover to those looking to justify terrorism and genocide. We have seen how this has played out in our own streets for those who raise the question of peace in our neighborhoods, when we play with words and semantics to give cover to gangs and drug dealers so as not to demonize them while they destroy our neighborhoods. This, ladies and gentlemen, is no different. Our moral clarity must be clear and without question. Our colleague's resolution, which I stand in firm support of and thank her for being brave enough to stand strong to present it, speaks that we are united, as one of our speakers said earlier, in condemning the terrorist attack that was planned and executed against civilians, that we stand with Israel during this traumatic and painful chapter that's been newly added to its history, and that we pray for the lives of those lost and the safe return of those held captive. How is any of that controversial? How is any of that debatable? How is any of that where we find ourselves with 40% of the members refusing to join something as basic as saying no one should have to live in a world filled with terror? We cannot sit here as leaders and look to our colleague and say, "We're in solidarity with you, but we support you, but we're with your people, but..." You are telling the terrorists that you are with them. You are siding with those who seek to terrorize the world. That is very much a true statement, because this is not about the Palestinians or the Israelis, the Jewish, or the Muslim. This is about a group of individuals who the whole world knows is hell-bent on killing people for its own agenda. It is irrefutable that that is what pushed them to do what they did and what will push them to continue to doing what they believe in doing at every turn. If in Israel last week, it will be here next week, and yet we are still trying to figure out ways to give them cover, to justify what they do, to give our emotions pause while they rearm themselves. No pause, no cover, Mr. President, is warranted when our enemies are at our doorstep. This body should have done this fully, with all members present, with all members in support. It is utterly shameful that this is even a divided question. But we will get this passed. We will show the world. We will show our residents what it means to stand truly, in the words of solidarity, when we give no cover to those who would do harm to ourselves and to our friends. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. I have two more Alders that wish to speak, Wagasback and Lee. If there are any others, Wagasback is... Okay. So I have Lee, Vegas, Conway, Irvin, and if I could, as well as, sorry, Julia Ramirez. But if I could, just remind people that our colleague, her religious practice has some limitations on how long she can stay. And I believe the time is coming soon. All right? So the chair recognizes Alder Woman Lee.
Thank you, Mr. President. As a cosponsor of this resolution, I unequivocally condemn the heinous actions of Hamas on October 7th. And I won't stand here and recount any more of that. I think we all know how ugly it was, and that is not in dispute. I pray for the safe return of the hostages, including those that are from Illinois, mother and daughter Natalie and her mother Judith. And this morning, we got a report that said that it's likely that they're alive, so we'll continue to pray for their safe return. My support... My support for this resolution does not mean that I'm not also heartbroken about and condemn the humanitarian crisis that has unfolded since October 7th, since Hamas attacked Israel on October 7th, which is now affecting the people of Palestine. And what's happening there is not acceptable. In my previous life, I did a lot of humanitarian aid and disaster response work. And it was my job to help people in their greatest hour of need. And I was one of those people who didn't have to stand on the sidelines and just watch. I could help. And like many of us here, I think we feel very helpless to do anything. You know, over the past few years, we've seen a sharp increase in Jewish hate crimes in Illinois. And I know that the Muslim communities across the country have also seen an increase, just like Asians have since COVID. And while I'm not comparing any of my own personal experiences to what's happening right now, I think we could all agree that any of this hate that is fueling this violence needs to be beaten back. As things progress with this conflict, I'm going to ask that my colleagues in the city council, the Chicago Police Department, and all of us with the power to protect, the power to have conversations, the power to encourage people to be in a dialogue, that we keep our eye on the ball when it comes to safeguarding all of these populations who may be experiencing heightened threats at this time. And that should be the priority for all of us. Thank you.
Thank you. Chair recognizes Alderman Vegas.
Thank you, Mr. President. I stand in support with this resolution. Having been in the region twice, once during Desert Shield, Desert Storm, as a Marine, actually being in combat, understanding that there are people out there that don't like democracy. And a second time as an elected official in Jerusalem and also visiting the West Bank. Seeing kibbutz, which are bomb shelters, dressed up with Winnie the Pooh in order to soften it for young children that have to think about bombs on a daily basis. Hamas is a terrorist group, period. Hezbollah is a terrorist group, period. Have we not forgotten what occurred on 9/11? The reason why we have, we are fortunate that we have not been impacted with terrorism on our shores is because we're a little bit further apart. But condemning terrorism is very easy. And we should all condemn terrorists. As we're thinking about peace in the Middle East, we're thinking about solutions that are there that have been talked about, whether it's a two-state solution, which I support, Hamas doesn't, whether it's recognizing the LGBT community in the Middle East, we support that here in Chicago, Hamas doesn't. These are people, again, that want to end democracy. And I can tell you that Israel, like Ukraine, are allies. There is no, there is no part-time ally. Either you are an ally or you're not. So I stand with Israel because they are an ally. They are a democracy in the Middle East. And I would encourage us to remember as a democratic body here, that we, we support democracy. There's a reason why the governor of Illinois, President of the United States, presidents and prime ministers throughout the country that are all democratic have shown support for Israel, because they too believe in democracy. So ladies and gentlemen, this is a resolution that I want to thank my colleague from the 50th Ward for bringing forward. We can do both. We can think about and pray for peace in the Middle East. But we have to remember that we stand with our allies as well. So I urge my colleagues to support this resolution. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Alderman Conway.
Mr. President, I rise in support of this resolution, in support of Alderwoman Silverstein and our Israeli allies in condemning terrorism. As, as a US Navy, a US Navy veteran, still active Reserve Intelligence Officer, I've spent a good part of my life fighting terrorist groups like Hamas, Al Qaeda, ISIS, Hezbollah. And I, and in that role, I've seen a lot of bravery, Deb, and, and few as brave as you've shown, the bravery you've shown here today. In fact, in just, in just 2021, I was deployed the whole year as Senior Intelligence Director of our, of our US European Command, where my job was literally watching Israel, among, among others. And during that time, I saw constant attacks on Israel, not just the ones that you hear about in the news, but constant rocket fire mortar attacks on Israel directed at civilian areas that would shock any American. Now, the foreign policy situation of the Israeli-Palestinian conflict is complicated. But we're not talking about 1948. We're not talking about 1967. We're not talking about 2005. We're not talking about 2007 or even a two-state solution. It's really just about condemning terrorism. And on the morning of October 7th, as Deb described, Hamas militants entered a music festival and started indiscriminately killing unarmed civilians, and 260 of them, and kidnapping an unknown further amount. The videos online are horrifying, as Alderman Hopkins said. Unlike him, I would say, please don't go view them. They're, they're horrifying. You see families learning of their loved ones being kidnapped and tortured and brutally killed because the terrorists actually send their loved ones the videos from their victims' phones. And there is nothing that can justify this terrorism by, by Hamas. That's why it's been condemned by President Biden, by Governor Pritzker, by 390-plus members of the House of Representatives. And they can't agree on anything. And yet, they can agree, can agree on this. This isn't complicated. It shouldn't even be controversial. You're either condemning terrorism or you're condoning it. And I'm proud to stand unequivocally with our strong ally, Israel, with the Jewish community. And I, and I want to thank Alderwoman Silverstein for your leadership and your bravery. And I urge my colleagues to support this resolution. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Alderman Irvin.
Thank you, Mr. President. In the interest of time and our colleague, I'll keep it fairly short. But let me just say this, that hate, hate is a terrible, terrible disease. It is impossible for people to talk about peace in a conversation with hateful actions. You say, "Today you, tomorrow me." I do not believe that we should sit idle and say nothing as a council when one of our members has brought something of their community that is an atrocity. Deb, we may not always agree on everything, but I do agree that we should support you and your community in its darkest hour. Again, today you, tomorrow it could be me. The one piece of this that, that's, that I think about, my parents come from North Lawn Dale, which, for, from a historical perspective, was a fairly heavily Jewish community throughout time in the early parts of the 40s, 30s, 40s, and 50s. The church I was baptized in was once a Jewish synagogue. So the link between the African-American community and the Black community in Chicago i- is strong. We talk about the, the work that the JUF and Mount Sinai has done in North Lawn Dale and on the west side of Chicago, shows and continues to show the support that we all have for, for one another. Yesterday, the, the trip that many of us took to the Illinois Holocaust Museum put a unique perspective on today's conversation. I'll say this, today you, tomorrow me. And so I hope that we all can find common ground to support one of our own while we may not agree on everything. We cannot stand by idly silent while terrorism breeds its ugly head, while people are inexplicably slaughtered, while people are hurting. So I'm hopeful that we can find common ground today to support Alderwoman Silverstein and the community of the Jewish faith and of Israel. Because today you, tomorrow it could be me. Thank you.
Thank you. The chair recognizes, I believe she left the floor. The chair recognizes Alderwoman Helu Gutierrez.
Two deaths should never equal a life. My upbringing in Mexico exposed me to the horrors of the drug war. I was blessed to move to this country 15 years ago. I was able to escape those circumstances. But many of the people in the affected regions do not have the same luxury. What's unfolding, what's unfolding in Israel is without a doubt disturbing. Hamas actions can only be described as acts of terrorism. But as my congressman wisely pointed out, we cannot allow over 2 million innocent Palestinians to pay for the sins of Hamas. While Israel has the right to seek justice and defend itself against these attacks, their tactics, their tactics are causing great suffering. Cutting off electricity to hospitals, depriving a predominantly child population of food and medicine, and even contemplating the bombing of an entire city is not justice. It's a humanitarian catastrophe. For these reasons, I cannot support this resolution. I believe in justice. I pray for peace, but not at the cost of countless innocent lives. And to my colleague, Mr. Lopez, that was a very impressive speech. I just wish you would have showed that same energy and anger when Alderman Burke made those anti-Semitic remarks about the Jewish community. Instead, you doubled down on your business with them. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other alders that wish to speak? The chair recognizes Alderman Gardner.
Thank you, President. I just want to first and foremost say, God bless the souls that have been affected and impacted by the tragedy on October 7th and since then, both Israeli and Palestinians. Fortunately, thank God, we have a Jewish representative on our city council to help bring a voice to those that are and have experienced hate or been victims of violence. Thank you, Alderman Silverstein, for being a strong voice for the, for the Jewish community. With that said, I do, I believe we have yet to have a Muslim representative on our city council. And I know we do not have a Palestinian representative in our city council. The 45th Ward represents many Palestinians, and many of whom feel that they do not have enough voices within representative bodies. Therefore, it is vital to also be a voice for the voiceless that we talk about all the time. I empathize with all victims and family members of those killed or injured since October 7th. But if Palestinians, and I'm not talking about Hamas members, are not in support of this resolution, then I cannot be in support of this resolution either. I appreciate all the work that has been done that has gone into writing this resolution. And I empathize with all the victims, including the family members who have been, again, killed or injured in this. Palestinian people in our community are some of the nicest, kindest, warmest people that I have ever met, as well as Jewish people. But I cannot, again, as I said, if Palestinians, members of our community are not in support, then I cannot be in support. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any alders that wish to speak? The chair recognizes Alderman Riley.
Thank you, Mr. President. I wasn't planning on speaking today. I think many of my colleagues speaking in favor of this resolution have made eloquent points. It's an incredibly sad day for the city of Chicago. There's a lot of passion in this chamber earlier, expressed by both people of the Jewish faith and Palestinian state supporters. It's sad that this has been our public dialogue, shouting down on another, interrupting each other, threatening each other. That's not Chicago. I also want to compliment Alderman, Alderwoman Silverstein for bringing this resolution forward. And I know that each of us might have liked to see some language inserted into this resolution to suit our needs and our feelings. But that isn't the case. What we have here before us is what we have here before us. And I've read it now 30 times during this meeting to make sure I haven't read it wrong. Nowhere in this resolution are we condemning the Palestinian people. We're condemning a known international terrorist organization that just killed hundreds upon hundreds of Jewish people in their sovereign state and injured thousands more. And now, as a result of Hamas's actions, Israel has no choice but to respond. And that's precisely what Hamas wants. Hamas wants this to enrage their Arab neighbors and incite additional violence against the Israeli state. That's a real cynical approach to seeking change, political change in the Middle East, launching thousands of missiles against innocent families, women and children, and then hiding like cowards behind the Palestinian people, knowing that Israel would respond in kind. That's what's going on here. This is an act of cowardice. I am very sympathetic to the Palestinian people. As Alderman O'Shea mentioned, I too am an Irish Catholic. And we have a long legacy of British colonialism in Ireland that has done irreparable damage. And there is a debate to be had over how to achieve peace in the Middle East between Palestine and Israel. And I also think a two-state nation, a two-state strategy may be the solution here. But that's not what's being debated in this resolution. This resolution is about condemning terrorism and condemning the kidnap and rape and torture and murder of innocent civilians who want no part in any of this violence. So this should be an easier choice for us, I think. And if we want to opine on, on Middle Eastern policy related to political solutions to end the violence there, let's have that debate another day. But what we're doing here is agreeing that this kind of terrorist violence is wrong. It's evil, no matter who it's perpetrated against. And so I stand in strong support of this resolution. And I want to thank Alderwoman Silverstein for being courageous despite being threatened and heckled and insulted. I want to thank you for that, Deb, and, and I'm proud of you. And I'm proud to be your colleague. And, and that said, I'd urge my, my colleagues to vote aye. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Alderman. Are there any other alders who wish to speak to this resolution? All right, CNN Alder Silverstein, do you have a motion?
Yes, I move passage by voice vote.
Alderman Silverstein has made a motion to pass this resolution with a voice vote.
Mr. President, I would like to be recorded as a no.
Okay. All those in favor of supporting this resolution signify by saying aye. All those... All those opposed signify by saying nay. In the opinion of the chair, the ayes have it. On the motion to reconsider, Alder Woman Silverstein.
I move to reconsider the vote.
All those in favor of the motion to reconsider signify by saying aye. Any opposed, say nay. This motion fails. Alder Woman Silverstein on the motion, we never suspended, that's right. Thank you very much. Thank you all for being patient with us today. I am grateful that this body, before we adjourn, I'm grateful for this body's patience in the midst of a very... The chair recognizes Alderman Lopez.
Sorry, Mr. President, I'll wait till your remarks are finished.
All right, thank you very much. Thank you for this body, for its incredible patience during what has been, obviously, a very heavy moment for the city of Chicago. And it's the pain and trauma that has rippled across this world is certainly felt right here in the city of Chicago and amongst all of us. So we are grieving together as a city. Families across the city who have lost loved ones or have not yet heard from their relatives and whether or not they are safe, our hearts and our prayers are certainly with all of those families. Rabbi Bros gave a very profound statement recently. "Hold the humanity, the heartache, and the need for security for the Jewish people, while also holding the humanity and the dignity and the need for justice for the Palestinian people." I believe she is right, because for far too long, these two conditions have been set up as a false binary. I believe that justice for all begins by condemning the horrific attacks that were undisclosed. Many of you know that I have deep roots in the larger liberation movement, and so I want to be very clear, as we continue to engage with this struggle in Chicago and across the world, that the vicious attacks by Hamas does not achieve liberation. But I also want to be absolutely clear, as the prophet Isaiah made it very clear, to be chosen, to be sent, to set the captives free, and to bring liberation to all. And as mayor, as someone who has been raised in the bosom of the church, I will continue to fight for liberation for every single person. I will continue to pray for safety and for peace, and ask that Chicagoans do the same. As a leader, I support all of our efforts to bring unity and healing in this moment. To Alder Woman Silverstein, I'm sorry. And to all of those who have lost family, members, and those who continue to suffer under oppression across the world, let this be very clear, that the city of Chicago gets to be an example of how we hold the balance between all people, those who have lost their lives while watching a concert, and those who have suffered under brutal rule. So my heart is heavy, my family grieves with you all. I will always do my best to be there for everyone. Alder Woman Harris, the motion to adjourn.
Alderman Lopez.
Oh, my apologies. Alderman Lopez. Alder Woman Silverstein, I warned him, just saying, Alderman Lopez.
Thank you, Mr. President. And actually, if our colleague needs to go, thank you. In accordance with Rule 13, I wish to speak before the body, please. As my character and reputation has been impugned by the good colleague of the 14th Ward bears
Chair recognizes Alderman Lopez.
Thank you, Mr. President. And to our colleague Alderman Silverstein, thank you. Sadly, that should have been the end of this meeting, but I have to rise since my colleague before me decided to try and question my character as to why I spoke out today, trying to inject matters that have no business in this room today to help guide and protect her political mentors. It is unconscionable that that kind of discussion would be made by someone who my ward, my staff, my community has helped for the past four months when my aldermanic neighbor couldn't even open her own office. This body, as we talk about how we support each other, requires that we sit and work together. But if you want to be that kind of person, if you want to make these wild accusations on the public floor as we're trying to show solidarity about something that has nothing to do with your politics and your congressman's politics, then shame on you. Such messaging must be confronted, and it must be stopped, because it is completely unacceptable to make such salacious accusations and charges by one member by name that has no bearing in what's going on here. There's a time and a place when these things will transpire, when we should be uniting with our colleagues, with our greater Jewish community. To have it sullied by this moment by the Alder Woman of the 14th Ward and her political benefactors is shameful. Thank you, Mr. President.
Alder Woman Harris on the motion to adjourn.
There be no further business. Before this body, I move that we adjourn.
Here are no objections, so order this meeting is adjourned.